Fall into order this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, team flag of the United States of America, and two red flags for the citizens of our nation, indivisible, et imperium justus scrae.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge Police Chief Portillo being here. The next item on the agenda is Changes to the Agenda. Does anyone want to make changes to the agenda?
No.
No changes? Then we have One Proclamation. Since it is the goal of our local senior Olympic program to promote healthy bodies and minds among our senior citizens, the town would like to recognize this as well as our 2019 National Senior Olympics Team with a proclamation. Councilor Conno and I will come down and make that presentation, and I think the team will come together around the podium.
Whereas the National Senior Olympic Organization, known as the National Senior Games Association, was formed in 1985 in St. Louis, Missouri, and the first games were held in 1987 in St. Louis with 25,000 competitors, and ended each year. And whereas the Mexican Senior Olympics mission is to promote physical fitness for seniors statewide, to provide year-round opportunities and motivation for adults aged 50 and older to participate in local, state, and national games. And whereas the Copper Country Senior Olympics, a local program offers opportunities for seniors to participate in 32 event, local events, 25 state events, and 15 national events. And whereas the Copper Country Senior Olympics qualifies 39 individuals aged 50 and above to go to Nationals this year now in New Mexico, a first-time event for Nationals in the state of New Mexico, to be held June 14 through 27, 2019. Copper Country Senior Olympics teams won 12 gold medals, 23 silver medals, and 10 bronze medals at the state event. And whereas the town of Silver City and Smith University supported the Copper Country Senior Olympics through funding and the use of their facilities, allowing the Copper Country Senior Olympics to put on their games. The help and support of many local merchants helps make those games possible. And whereas the Copper Country Senior Olympics in Grand County were honored in Silver City by being asked to start the National Games torch run, and the latest honor in 2019 has been given to the local coordinator, Mario Funtana, who will be the flag bearer and the new Mexico contingent at the national opening ceremonies. Now therefore...
Now therefore, Councilor Conno, new mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby recognize the 2019 National Senior Olympic Team, and congratulate each Olympian for their outstanding personal achievements in the New Mexico Senior Olympic Games, and wish them great success in their upcoming competition at the 2019 National Senior Olympic Games. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
I ask Councilor Conno to help me with this because she's a member of the local Olympic Team.
Thank you, Mario. I want to thank the town of Silver City, the mayor, and the staff for all the support they give Copper Country Senior Olympics. It is a true honor to receive this proclamation, and thank you. It will be an honor for Copper Country Senior Olympics to represent Grand County Senior Olympics at the National Senior Games. Thank you.
Greg Brown, the president of the Copper Country Senior Olympics. First of all, thank you very much, Mayor Ladner, town councilors, we appreciate it very much, and to Alex Brown for our unwavering support of the Senior Olympics for many years. I want to wish good luck to all the athletes going to the Nationals in Albuquerque, and wish him only success. Again, congratulations to Mario for representing our particular organization, and also New Mexico by carrying the New Mexico flag at the opening ceremonies. So we're very proud of Mario. Mario makes the Senior Olympics in Silver City. I'd like to at least introduce a couple of the officers here at this time. Our vice president is here, Alfred Olas. Tudal Quintana is our treasurer. Maria Elena Galindo, our secretary. Leona Olas, our historian. We have some of our board members-at-large, Ron Reed, Preston Harper, and Dave Baez. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you for all of you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is Council Comments. Councilor Conno?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say how proud I am of the Copper Country Senior Olympics. I know how hard all of you work all year long. It's not just a one-day event for any of you. You put so much time and effort into what you do, and you make us all proud, and I know you're going to make us all proud at Nationals. People are going to be talking about the Silver City group, I know it. So congratulations, and I look forward to seeing all your medals and your get-backs. The only thing I have is that I continue to be very frustrated by the speeding that happens on Leslie Road. It's getting out of hand, and I'm just waiting for somebody to get run over on that street. So I'm hoping that perhaps Chief Portillo can start doing a traffic study in that area to see if possibly we can put some bumps on that street. I know people don't like bumps, but I think that might potentially slow people down a little bit because it's getting pretty bad. I would like to see bumps particularly like the ones that are on 12th Street that are kind of like a mountain instead. Hopefully, I don't know if that's possible, but if it is, I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick thing. I had a meeting with a couple of ladies, and they are doing a program, a program called SPIN, S-P-I-N, and they are asking, they will come and ask the town council, Mr. Brown was about it, about trying to put up facilities up in the area of the senior citizens building. And it's supposed to be some sort of, for mentally impaired people, families and all that, and it's going to be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom windows. And it's from what I understand, probably about an $8 million project. But they will come and they'll come to our town council meeting and expect you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that one of the competitions in Athens and Greece when the Olympics were first started was rhetoric. And when you guys decide to include rhetoric, I will join in. I only have one other thing, which is every year I try to attend the Fiesta Latina, which is starting on the 21st of the university, and I understand that there's going to be all kinds of events and artisans from Central and South America and Mexico, and it's really a big event, so I just want to say I'll join it.
Thank you. Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish all the contestants from the Copper Country Seniors to good luck at the National Games. I know you're going to bring home, as Councilor Conno said, all the medals, and hopefully we'll get to see them. And I know how hard all of you work, and I really appreciate all of you, so thank you for representing us up there. I also wanted to, the Superstate Daily Press printed part of a refinement to the statement I made two weeks ago about recycling, and I just want to read the part, the portion that they did print, and then the additional information that I put in my statement so that the public could get a chance to hear what I sent them. So this is what I sent to them. I want to refine the statement I made at Tuesday's town council meeting. Like the town of Silver City, Albuquerque, and Las Cruces are recycling those materials for which there is market, such as cardboard and metal. However, reality is, especially with the recent closing of other markets like Malaysia, there is no market for most plastics and other materials that are part of the town of Silver City's single-stream recycling. As we recently learned, and that was two weeks ago, the bulk of our single-stream that we thought we were recycling was actually being placed in the landfill after saying it's a freedom. Next steps locally are to suspend the single-stream recycling program on July 1 while providing large recycling collection bins for cardboard only in locations around Silver City, continue to accept metal at the landfill for recycling, begin an education program centered on reduce reuse, as in water bottles, that you can fill and recycle, and the need to ensure that materials to be recycled are completely free from food and other residue. Potentially create a fund that supports creative, innovative ways for adaptive reuse of plastics and other material, and to collaborate with our other communities to find solutions for our common recycling dilemma. As Mr. Brown had said, I am hopeful that markets can reopen in the future for materials other than cardboard and metal. In the meantime, if each individual and family begins to make small changes to reduce waste, such as using refillable containers for water and beverages, and using rezu, sorry, reusable containers for storing food, these actions will significantly reduce what is being sent to our landfill. So thank you for, to everyone that called to talk about recycling. I know that we will continue to do what we can, and we will explore with our colleagues and other municipalities what we may open in the future. It's just, it's right now, it's just sort of unfortunately not just here, but everywhere. And if you do look online, you can find out that Malaysia sent back ships to Australia full of recycle material, material that they'd sent for recycling, but they sent back six ships, I think it was. And Thailand has also stated that they plan on sending back the ships that have been sitting off their coast since 2013 back to the Canadians. So it's, they're just holding these vessels offshore and not accepting them because the plastics are so dirty. So just, just wanted to let you know, this is, this is news on CNN and on almost every single thing, and some of it we don't hear about in the United States, but you can, you can see it online. And that's what we're facing, so we all have to work together for the common good of our environment and everyone else. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I have a few comments. Each February, on a Saturday closest to February the 15th, we celebrate our Territorial Charter Day, and even though it's recently come under attack by the state, we will still celebrate that day because it's an important part of our history. So I'll be forming a committee pretty soon to start organizing that. If anyone is interested in serving on the committee, please contact me. My phone number's on the town website, or call Ann Mackey, our town clerk, and we'll put you on that committee. We do need help. Speaking of the territorial charter, each of the members of the town council picks a project throughout the year. Part of the territorial charter was that community members could be cert, could be called to work, to do service work in the community. It was mandatory. Well, our city council has volunteered to spend one Saturday throughout the year on a service project of their choosing. This past Saturday, we had a wonderful event that was sponsored by Councilor Ray. It was the rededication of the Greg Hottick Park located on Spring Street. It was really a special, special event. We had many of the family members of Greg Hottick were there, his wife, most of his children, grandchildren. It was really special, and to see that family come together and celebrate that together was really worth seeing. And Councilor Ray cooks a mean hot dog and a hamburger, and he cooked a lot of them. So thank you, Councilor Ray, for that. I'd like to talk a little bit real quickly about the case of the escaped turtle. I got a phone call from a community member, I see Chief Portillo smiling over there, that out of nowhere, this huge turtle showed up in her yard. She didn't know what to do with it. She figured it had escaped from someone's pen. She called the police department. They went over and collected the turtle, and they found its, they found its owner, right, chief? So that had a happy ending, which was great because that turtle was walking right down the middle of the street and was a target for someone not paying attention. Also, I've had a number of phone calls from people that are concerned about various things that involve either code enforcement for animals, or trash, or different things like that. And I'd like to encourage you, I don't mind receiving a phone call, but I'd like to encourage you that when you do have an issue related to those things, go online, get the phone number for our code enforcement officer and our animal control officer, and you can call them, and they'll take care of it right away. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 28, 2019 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of May 28, 2019.
Is there a second? Councilor Edison? Oh, Councilor Ray?
Councilor Ray?
I'll second this, as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Y'all are turning the tables.
Yeah, I didn't know, just changing it up a little.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Public Input. I got two people signed up for that. First was Pete Torres. Is, is he still here?
Yeah, he's right.
Come up, the microphone's yours, and you have five minutes.
I think Mario left already.
Huh?
I think Mario, I think he's...
Oh, Mario's going to do it?
He's just there. Yeah.
I want to talk just briefly on the subject of the side-by-sides that have been going on for some time to no avail as to the favorable outcome for those people that own the side-by-sides. I simply feel that I need to say a few words on their behalf. First of all, it seems very unfair to deny civilized, responsible, tax-paying citizens the use of the streets and around the town of Silver City. The old trucia of you can't beat city hall comes to mind due to there not being a substantial amount of the owners of the side-by-sides. There's one person that came to my side on here last week, asked my son to come, and feels like you can't fight city hall. I think that's a census of opinion of most people that did not come today, but it's not, I dare repeat, I feel it's very unfair for people that are elected to deny these people that are good citizens to use the streets. All they're asking for is, I see, is a six months to a year to show that they can produce the room, if there is such, they can form a wider representation, and police the room closed. I think it's very unfair to doubt them and not give them a chance. That's, that's all I have. I surrender. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is Reports. Did you come up with anything? Okay, no reports. Next item is Ten Unfinished Business. Under that item is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1278 and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Elections, Section 2-21 through 2-29, and Appendix D of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and councilors, this ordinance is to adopt the State Local Election Act as our election code for Municipal Officer Election Day, which would occur in March of even numbered years. The ordinance also provides for four-year terms for the mayor and councillor positions, and it provides the procedures for vacancy. And it extends the terms to four-year terms, beginning in March of 2020. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Conno?
Mayor, I move to approve of ordinance number 1278, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Elections, Section 2-21 through 2-29, and Appendix D of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a comment.
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you. I have this comment because a couple of constituents have approached me, one of whom has kind of a grudging respect for me, but he said, you know, I didn't vote for you for four years. Well, I hadn't planned to serve for four years either. But I do want to say for also the constituents who said, I'm so glad because then I don't have to go campaigning for you, you know, for another few years, that if this is adopted, and that would mean that my term would be extended to January 2022, as well as Councilor Conno's, well, that's March 2022, I'm sorry, as well as Councilor Conno's and as well as the mayor. And I just want to assure all the constituents out there that even though this is a change, I will continue to serve every one of you respectfully, professionally, with integrity, compassion, and a good thought. So I just want to say, please don't be alarmed. I think all the councillor members and the mayor have everyone's good intentions at heart.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
We have it.
Oh, we have a motion. Oh, you can take mine, okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, in.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Ammon Smith? Uh, Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is under New Business. 11A is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-17, a resolution expressing support for legislation amending the powers and duties of the New Mexico Municipal Boundary Commission. Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. So recently, as most folks know, we went through an issue where the Municipal Boundary Commission was going to have a hearing regarding annexation. Some, a piece of property was proximal to the, to the town, and our town government went through step by step by step about how that would be a burden on our current citizens and on our departments, and the possible consequences of doing so. And the person seeking this withdrew his request. But in the process of going through step by step, they also outlined exactly what we would consider as potential annexation, and what we would hope to do if someone came forward, the sort of expectations we have. Now, we're not the only municipality that has faced potential annexation through the Municipal Boundary Commission. It counted us in, and I'm going to be honest, an end run, an end run around the community and our land use codes. Some communities have been very successful in having the Boundary Commission listen to their concerns, and other communities have had to have forced annexation. Some in part comes to mind in several others. So with the policy committees coming forward in several weeks that many of us on the council are going to, this is where the council, if this resolution passes, would provide a copy of this resolution seeking relief and seeking legislative amending of the powers and duties of the New Mexico Municipal Boundary Commission, not only through our local elected officials in the state, but also through the municipal league. And I would just want to just preface this by saying that next year's legislative session is a 30-day session, so it's unlikely that this will be on the call that the governor puts out, mainly as financial, whereas we see this as a financial issue for all of our municipalities. But it's not something that they, they kind of recognize as a financial issue. They usually talk about state budgets and things like that on a 30-day session. But what this will do, if we move it forward, if the council approves to move this forward, I will carry that up and hopefully with the mayor, who's on the same committee than I am on. We have a joint committee that we will be presenting to the Community Economic Development Governmental Operations and Human Resources Committee, which is also joined by now this year the Public Infrastructure and Communications Policy Committee. So these two committees will hear this, and it will be up to the members of that committee, that joint committee, to move it forward in the process. So it gets it on, gets it on the radar. It follows in with the New Mexico Municipal League's policy statements where we want to ensure that local governments have the ability to self治, that they're not kind of imposed, things are not imposed on them by the state, although we just did the Local Election Act that was kind of imposed on us. So I would just say that there are things that they can do. So that's my explanation for why I'm bringing this forward, to get it into the system so that during this upcoming year, we can have conversations, the municipal league can have conversations, that it will be in the 2021 60-day session where this could actually be put forward and moved forward on. So I don't know if our attorney would like to add anything else, but I think I explained it in terms of what we're trying to do, and this is the proper way to bring forward a resolution from our town about something we want the municipal league to address as a whole, that affects all municipalities. So I stand for questions from the council.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for considering this. Thank you for considering this. We'll see what happens.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Counselor Madison?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-17, a resolution expressing support for the legislation amending the powers and duties of the New Mexico Municipal Boundary Commission.
Do I hear a second? Counselor Ray?
I second that motion.
Motion and second. Roll call, please, then.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. May I also just thank the council and ask that the town clerk forward this to Randy Van Leek of the League Council so that he can get it prepared for the policy committee to review. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1281 in ordinance amending Section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.10 Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Definitions of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as the Silver City Traffic Ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. 117 is an OI that we're trying to pass, or that I'm trying to propose to the council and to the city. We strongly would like to just try, try it for a year's time, just a year's time, just to see if it will work. And like I said the last time around, with the people here also, we will help police that. We will. We will help the police department and the city try to police them. I know we're going to have a couple people or some people that will go out the top of the wall and do it, but we don't want that. And it's this ordinance here, the same thing, we're going to try to have it as safe as possible. And I would interest the chief to see if he would be going to say something, if it's possible.
Mayor, council, I think it's important for you to understand that I still feel strongly against it like last year. I still have my concerns. And I won't go into it in much detail as last time, but it's overall public safety and that's my job as police chief to look out for the public. I still think that public safety as far as crashes is going to be a concern. Right now, the police department are already struggling on keeping it down. I believe we're going to have issues with noise complaints. I also believe we're going to have issues with use on state highways. However, with that being said, I want the public to understand one thing, that I'm willing to work and help educate if you decide to pass it. And by doing that is by being involved with data, help to analyze the data. We do monthly crash reporting already, and not weekly, bi-weekly, depending on our common areas within the town. But I want to gather information, whether it's noise complaints, reckless drivers, to try to gather as much accurate information as possible and then present it to you and tell you we're having issues here with, in certain areas with noise complaints, crashes. And I'm talking legit complaints, especially if it involves crashes with injuries, public and public safety issues. So those are my concerns, but again, if you decide to pass, I want to be very involved to help make it safe as possible.
Any questions for the chief?
Aye. If it passes, would you be willing to hold on six months or a year's time to, as a title basis?
Yes. If you decide to pass it, then whatever you guys decide, I'm willing to work with you on it and gather as much information and data as possible.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Counselor, President Chief, or Counselor Ray?
I want to, Counselor Ray. No, we're in here, doesn't mention the one-year thing, so are you going to add that into it by the time we vote, if we pass the OI?
Yes.
Are we asking questions of each other and staff? Are we asking questions of each other and staff now before a motion? Or just chief? I don't have any questions of the chief.
Any other questions for Chief Portillo? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Are there any questions or comments from Counselor Ray? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Ray, I'm sorry, point of clarification. I do have comments and questions, but are we going to wait until after a motion, or are we going to speak in them publicly now?
After the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 10281 in ordinance amending Section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.10 Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Definitions, et cetera, of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as the Silver City Traffic Ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1, Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico.
Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connaughton?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Counselor Lehman-Smith?
Actually, I have a first question I think is directed to our town attorney, and that is the idea of a trial law, where a law is put into place for six months to a year. I know that various taxes and bonds often have sunset clauses, but in your experience and knowledge, how common and, you know, useful is putting in all the processes of the new law for a trial basis?
This would be a first.
Okay, so we don't have a lot of legislative or social experience with this.
There are big times when something has been built in sunset, usually three years out, and that gives, and it's really, it guarantees that a future council will revisit the subject.
Okay, all right, that's helpful clarification. Thank you, thank you. So I have a couple of questions for Counselor Ray, and then I have a statement that I would like to make. So Counselor Ray, you said that there were no substantive changes in this NOI 1281 as compared to the superseded NOI 1269 that we considered last year as back then. Okay, so there's been no changes?
No.
Okay, all right. So then I have another question for you. First, I'll make a statement, which is that when I consider what an NOI is, which is a notice of intent to do something, I'm looking at, does it align with other kind of like laws, or does it create kind of a new law? What is the intent if there was some sort of law before? In this case, it would be the state law that was passed in 2016, SB 270, that allowed municipalities to do this. And then, of course, I want to know what's going to be the effect on the town if the council does do a law. So the state law, SB 270, that was passed in 2016, really had two things that that law was focused on. One was agricultural use, so that people could drive utility vehicles on paved roads between farm plots and stuff like that. And the other is outdoor recreational use, so that off-highway vehicles can be driven and within it says, you know, designated distances on paved roads to access recreational sites, which are those legal off-road trails most of the time. So Counselor Ray, could you please describe specifically the legal off-road recreational trails that this NOI, should it move forward, would allow off-highway vehicle users to access by driving on town-owned paved roads?
Yes, it would be only on, so to say, roads.
Yes, but what off-road recreational areas would it allow access to? So these are off-highway vehicles that are designed for off-highway recreational use. The state law really appointed that there were two uses, agricultural and access to off-road recreational trails. And I'm just asking which off-road recreational trails would be accessed by these vehicles driving on town roads?
Actually, I don't think there's any in the town, so it's.
There are not any, to your knowledge, my knowledge either.
There isn't any. You're right, yes.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And so therefore, the intent of that law and the intent of the sponsor of this and the governor's statement when she signed it, that the purpose of the state law was not to create substitute vehicles for regular daily use on local government roads, that would not be fulfilled, the recreational use would not be available to people who have these vehicles. Right?
Can you correct?
I just, I wanted to double check. Because if a municipal or a local government law does not align with the state law, then the question is, why would we be therefore doing it? Mr. Mayor, I have a bit of a statement. Is it a good time to make that statement, or would later be a better time?
Okay.
So as I've said, I look at three things. Is this kind of a new thing, or is there substantive state law or other law that aligns with? How well does it align? And what would be the effects on the town of passing eventually an actual law? Now, remember that before us tonight, what we had is an NOI, which would say that this would be an available notice of an intent. But I want to say here that I spoke today with a representative of the State Motor Vehicles Department, and asked that representative what their experiences have been with some of the municipalities that have actually, like Red River, where there are recreational trails everywhere along the small access area. And she said that really, the motor vehicle department has turned it into a check the box, and she used that term, where all of the actual analysis is done still by the fish and game department. So these are considered recreational vehicles for outdoor recreational use. And therefore, the paved road, where the motor vehicle department comes in, should only be short sections that access those recreational roads, and that the motor vehicle department only looks at the paperwork and the decals that a vehicle is received from fish and game, and they look at the local laws to determine whether or not they were a fixed or a decal. So the motor vehicle department is still kind of inflexible about this. It's not a vehicle. So she was very clear with me, this is not a class of a passenger vehicle. It is not considered a car. So that opens up some cans of worms here, because what this would mean would be that if the town Silver City, without any recreational trail access in proximity, passed a law allowing an entire other class of vehicles to be legal on our streets, we open ourselves up for some weirdness in terms of liability. And I just want, you know, I don't know how much I've talked with the town attorney about that, but it was pretty clear to me that we would open up ourselves to liability. Since such a move would not be in line with the state law, it makes me wonder why would we be doing it? And I think that the intent has been stated in the past, of course not as of tonight, that there aren't any real evidence-based reasons in terms of outdoor recreation to do it. But rather, it seems to be, again, folks in town who already own the vehicles or would like to own one, and would like to drive them around town. So therefore, that intention of I own a car, or I own a, I would like a three-dog car and drive it around town does not align with the state intent of that law. And I also want to echo Chief Portillo's concerns that our town citizens and Grand County citizens do not yet seem to realize that there's another power that intervenes here. And the power that intervenes is determined transportation, state law of driving on state codes. Now, the DOT, with their Commission Policy 71, and they've done a couple of precedents, have gone through a process looking at how to designate small sections of state roads that have access to recreational trails that are also part of municipal boundaries or county boundaries. They've taken some action to designate those as drivable. Hudson Highway 90, Silver Heights Highway 180, and Pino's Altos Highway 15, within the town limits, don't meet those criteria. Some of you might know that Highway 15 up by Pino's Altos did have recently some small sections designated as being ROV accessible, but it's up to the county to put up the signs to police. The trend to do it assures us all that the DOT will monitor things like crashes and complaints, so that was, you know, useful to me. I want to say here that when I went to training at the New Mexico Municipal League about how to be a new elected officer, there was a great deal of discussion about what a notice of intent meant. And a notice of intent means that the council or that legislative body is saying that they're going to publicly consider changing or implementing a law. It gives us an opportunity for public discussion. But those professionals at the New Mexico Municipal League also were very clear that by open public discussion, what they meant was discussion among us. They didn't mean big forms for public opinion. It's discussion among us. So I just want to express my concerns, since there have been zero changes to the previous NOI, since having a trial law seems to me to be fraught with future difficulties, with people thinking then that they have an absolute right to do something, since there are no recreational trails in proximity to the town that would be accessible by town roads. And given that it is not likely that Highway 90, 180, and 15 within the town limits would be designated as R will be accessible by the DOT, I just really wonder about the basis for me to discuss of the NOI. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilors.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Counselor Amos Smith, the comments that I was going to make, so I don't think I need to reiterate them, other than to say that I echo what she's stated. I've struggled with this because in all the train that I've gone through at the New Mexico Municipal League about how to treat resolutions, ordinances, and notices of intent, there is no substantive change to the one before us that I had voted against in August. And the only request is to do a limited amount of time. And that's not really something that's substantive enough to alleviate some of the, or many of the concerns that have been brought up, known by Counselor Lehman-Smith, but also by the chief. And as I said, it probably was a month ago when we were. And as I said, it probably was a month ago when we were considering several things, um, on the agenda, I consider very thoughtfully and very carefully what, um, our chief of police thinks is important. And, um, he's stated his willingness to work with us if this does go forward, but he's also stated the concerns that he has in terms of safety and of crashes and of, you know, uh, everything else. And so I lean heavily towards him, as I did over a month ago when we had something before us that didn't fit the criteria, and his captain at the time expressed the concern the department had. So I, I, I just wanted to express my concern about this. I think that what I would recommend to, uh, depending on how the outcome goes, if it, if it's not favorable, my suggestion is to really work with the legislature for them to designate these vehicles as a passenger vehicle, so that then we are not, they have the liability, not the town of Silver City. Um, it's sort of like the, uh, the Airbnb. You know, we tried to do something with Airbnb, other communities have been successful, it wasn't successful here, but then they recently passed that so that, you know, Airbnb, vacation rental by owner, short-term rental, um, uh, those sort of short-term, under 30-day rental properties will be paying, um, in the near future, not only gross receipts tax, but, um, well, their occupants will be, and water's tax, contributing like hotels do. And, um, I, I think that a concerted effort on the part of recreational enthusiasts and the people that own these vehicles or want to own these vehicles would be the way to get the state to consider that. And I do know that one legislature, legislator, is attempting to do that, and I think anything that we could do to, that, that folks that would like this would support that, and that would then change state law and make it, I think, potentially easier for us, at least for me, to consider moving this forward. So that's, I just wanted to kind of give my take on it and the fact that, I, I would want to move this forward, but there's nothing really to discuss, it's been discussed a year ago. And, um, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Councilor Connaught?
Thank you, Ms. Um, I would just like to remind the council that I too have gone through all of those meetings, all of those trainings, and have reached the, um, certification of certified notice of, of result, just like Council Benson and Mayor Lattin. I understand what a notice of intent is for too. Um, I feel like this conversation hasn't reached its limit in the community. This is something I hear about constantly from people on both sides, people who are neutral, people who are just interested in where this is going to go. More than once, I have voted to let a notice of intent continue so that we can continue a discussion. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing that. And because of that, I will vote to have this approved. I realize that we have a stay on eight, we probably will never change that, but I also know that, um, there are other ways to have this decided, including potentially a special election, um, letting the community decide at the whole instead of just the four of us. Um, that's something I would definitely support if Councilor Ray decides to go in that direction. Um, I, I'm very, very adamant about the fact that our community should be allowed to speak about what they believe in and what they want and what they don't want. And if we do not pass a notice of intent and we effectively kill this this evening, then we're telling the public we don't want to hear what they have to say, and I'm opposed to that.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as of right now, we're the only municipality in the state of municipal that has not allowed one. We're the only one. As of right now, every other community that I've gone to that listens to and may research on, they allow side by side. And why we, we're not allowed here, the only, there's people out there that are willing to make some sort of a living, there's a couple of guys here that they will do things, they will make it, they want, they will make it, after part of the NY that we proposed here a couple, a couple months ago. And I understand, I understand your concern, I really do understand your concern, but, um, if this doesn't pass, then we will go and ask for a special election and take it before the state. And, and we're not trying to be, that is never our intent, we just feel that the elderly people are the ones that have side by side, and the mayor knows it, and a lot of people know this, the chief knows this, a lot of elderly people own side by side, and we are all very responsible. But if you think I'm, I'm going out there and saying something, I shouldn't, we say I'm not. We're the only municipality that, right now, that will not allow it, that doesn't allow it. And with that, if we fail, we'll fail, but we will go through another election and ask for a special election. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or any discussion? Councilor Ray Masurra?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Um, I, I want to speak back to that, I'm not actually convinced that every municipality has legalized.
I said, we're the only municipality that doesn't allow it. All the rest that have allowed it are allowed it. And we're the only municipality that, right now, doesn't allow it.
So I would like to double check that, because I'm not sure that that's so. But I also want to say that, Councilor Connaught, I appreciate your permit, that there are public voices that may or may not have been heard about this. I too am actually interested in overall public opinion, which is actually demonstratively different from a special interest group discussion. So I, I would be, if there would be a way to have every citizen in Silver City have a button right now and say, do you want this, yes or no, that would be really interesting to me. But to have, uh, people who already own the vehicles say that they really want to have special treatment, that's a special interest force, not necessarily the whole citizen force. So I'm, I'm very interested in how to get greater public voice of the public. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilor Ray, you still got your bottom down there? Any other discussion? Well, uh, I would like, personally, I would like to see this go another step further with discussion and public input. So I'm, I'm supporting that motion. With that said, um, I'd like a roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Nay.
Councilor Benson?
Nay.
And I will follow, yes, to take this to another step and get public input and give council members a chance to do a little more research if they want to. Thank you, Mayor Lattin. I want to say, though, that I've still got the same concerns I had before. Okay, uh, if, if, if the National Recreation Vehicle Organizations wasn't so black and white in terms of what these types of vehicles are meant to do, uh, that could be another issue, but nonetheless, motion carries. Next is item 11C, the approval slash disapproval to change the regular council meeting schedule for Tuesday, August 27 at 6:00 PM, to Tuesday, August 20, 2019, at 6:00 PM, at the Grand County Commission Meeting Room, 1400 Highway 180 East, Silver City, New Mexico. I think, uh, Councilor Ray and Councilor Benson, who requested this change? Councilor Ray, you want to?
Both of us.
Both of you did. Okay, if anyone wants to make the motion then?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to state that one of the reasons is that is when the New Mexico Municipal League, uh, annual convention conferences, and, and, um, I will be attending every day, um, in my role as president-elect. So, um, my, I move to approve to change the regular council meeting schedule for Tuesday, August 27 at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, August 20, 2019, at 6:00 PM, at the Grand County Commission Room, 1400 Highway 180 East, Silver City, New Mexico.
A motion, is there a second? Councilor Ray Masurra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, outside of that, the motion is stated.
Any discussion?
I have to come in. I will come in.
Councilor Ray?
Okay, you're going to miss a moment, please.
I know.
I'm going to see if I can.
Okay.
I'll think about it. Who's going to have more fun?
We have a motion, uh, thank you, we have a second.
Yes, sir. Yes, I second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, there's a second.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Councilor Ray Masurra, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, we are hereby adjourned.